Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our meeting tonight. The Zoning Board of Appeals for the town of Wayham. It is tonight, Wednesday, October 25th, 2017, at 6:30 PM at the Multi-Service Center in Wayham, 48 Marion Road. Call the meeting to order. I make a roll call. My far right, Town Engineer Charles Rowley. Our regular member, Wilma Engerman. Town Planner, Ken Butland. My far left, associate member Jake Morrison. Attorney Jen Kendrick. Carl Baptiste Senior. Myself, the Chair, Nazir Al Qalasi. And we're missing our Clerk, Jim Akabachi. He'll be coming in soon. We have some preliminary business for the minutes. We're gonna table those for a little after. I wanna take something out of order for continued public hearing. Salvatore, the petition 33-17. Is Angelo and Melody Salvatore here? They're not. Again, last time, I guess they made them, they wanted to withdraw, right?
Yes, that's what the indication was. We didn't get formal correspondence that they did.
Okay. So...
Without representation in the last two meetings.
Somebody wanna make a motion to have him withdraw without prejudice?
Yeah. Which applicant was this? Apologies.
33-17. They came in and they were gonna talk to the neighbors. I guess it's a hard variance. I guess they changed their mind.
Okay. I'll make a motion to allow the petitioners, petition 33-17, to withdraw their petition without prejudice.
Have a second?
Second it.
Second by Wilma. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, say 5-0-0. You guys could leave your side. Thank you. For the record, Jim Akabachi, our Clerk, just came in at 6:35. Thank you. All right. We go back to our regular thing. Minutes for October 11th, 2017. Who read the minutes?
I have.
I review them.
Okay, what do you guys think?
Move to accept as presented.
Have a second? Second by Wilma. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain. Petition 31-17, the CO for J. Donigan Company, 2419 Cranberry Highway.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is just a discussion.
That's the CO we discussed last time.
Yep. How you doing? Matt Smith with Bowler Engineering. Zach Richards is right behind me, but didn't quite have a boat to get down here this evening, so he's gonna be a few minutes late. When we were here last time, we had discussed a temporary CO for the Aldi on-site as well as at J. Donigan's site on Toby Road and Cranberry Highway. We've been going back and forth with Mr. Rowley relative to some performance bond requirements. And that was as late as this afternoon, we were talking about it and getting fairly close on some numbers. And so we're here to try to get a go-ahead to proceed to the selectmen relative to that. And I also did wanna talk a little bit. We're requesting a continuance on the site plan modifications that we're looking for. And I just wanted to give a brief update relative to what's going on in our end there. So, happy to do that in either order.
Let's start with the first thing, okay?
Sure. Yep.
I did see the, I printed it. Oh, here it is. The estimate cost of the site work.
Yep.
Came out to the 50 percent, $386,000. So you guys gonna post a bond?
Yes. What we do is a performance bond as opposed to a cash bond, which means we need to go to the selectmen, I believe, is the next step.
Charlie, you reviewed it?
I assume we're talking about the one that is dated today?
That's the one, yeah.
The only thing that I think needs a little bit of discussion is, I had made a comment earlier on the original cost of the amount of paving. It was clarified as to what the paving amount in the proposal was. It's simply a small amount, which would be around buildings B, C, and D being the bank. Because working out the 2,800 cubic, or 2,800 square feet comes out to about 25,000.
Square yard.
Square feet.
They have square yards.
I'm sorry, square yards, right. When you calculate that out, it's only an area of roughly 100 by 250. So, my question is, between now and when they're looking to get the CO, they're still gonna have to do the entire course of mix.
It's 100 by 2, it's 100 by 250 yards.
100 by 250 yards of feet.
The top course of mix, which is not in here. Now, I know that they're shooting for getting that paving done before the deadline date for requesting a CO. What happens if it isn't? Getting some poor weather now. I was in there yesterday. There's a lot of materials and vehicles and so forth on that existing binder course. If we get poor weather between now and that cutoff date, it may not get done. If we're doing a bond, I've seen the logical thing to do would be to calculate that out, include it in the bond, for the cost of the bond. And if it gets done, then it can be reduced.
How much time you need to get there to pave?
The schedule is to get it paved before they're opening.
I know the plan closes December 1st. You think you could get it before?
Their cutoff was what, November 15th or something like that?
That's the alleged cutoff. And typically, last year, they were paving until Christmas. So it's really weather-dependent. They're paving it. That's the word from everybody on the site. I understand the point, but I think to then have to proceed with trying to release that portion of the bond, it's not ideal.
Because I'm doing so, too. Rochester said, December 1st, not a problem, they think, unless...
When is the deadline for asking for a CO on the Aldi's building? That's what makes the difference.
The buildings they're building?
Yeah. They're asking for a certificate of occupancy, and I thought that was around the 15th of November?
No, I don't think they'll be ready.
The Aldi is, the opening date, I'm not sure when it is, but it's pretty quick, actually.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if they're after CO, and that is not included in the security amount, and it goes beyond the CO date?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Nothing in the bonded amount that covers that, and it's not finished. So that's why I'm saying that it should be included, because I don't think...
We could push the CO for after the paving.
Well, that's something they have to work out, but it's not in there right now, so I don't know how they...
Are you gonna finish AutoZone? There's no way you're gonna finish November 15th?
No, no, no. This is for the Aldi, just for the Aldi.
Yeah, go ahead.
If I may, I can't imagine a tenant like Aldi, or a tenant like AutoZone, continuing to pay 100 percent of their rent if their parking lot is not paved. So although it's an important issue, I'm a big believer in capitalism.
I do agree. I mean, it's gonna get paved, but I know, I understand Charlie's point.
No, no.
How many square yards you thinking different?
I have to go look at the original plans to see what the impervious coverage was. And I have no idea what that is off the top of my head.
If I may, it's a big number. I mean, they have a lot, it's the top course that has to get put down. So the site is paved, but they don't wanna have to stripe it twice. They wanna just get this done, and that's what the plan is. You know, I know this isn't supposed to count. They're not going anywhere. They're gonna get this work done. If we wanna increase the amount to cover this circumstance, I mean, we can do it.
Well, if we increase the amount, but they get it done, we back off. Is that correct?
No, but they have to...
Then you gotta go to the selectmen.
Right, and then they have to go back.
Oh, so they gotta...
I think part of what the 50 percent is to kinda cover that.
What do you think, Wilma?
I don't agree with that cover, and the 50 percent is for an entirely different thing.
Right. I understand.
So, from my perspective, it needs to be included, because there's no guarantee that it's gonna be done. Some landscaping has been done. So we know that if you read the correspondence that came in from Zach Richards today, he talks about the fact that they believe that there will be a contract agreement with the landscaping.
How many stores left to be built, like five?
Excuse me?
How many more stores?
It's a lot.
There's a lot more they're gonna build, so I guess we don't give them a CO if they don't?
That's the whole idea. If they don't have the security amount that covers the construction to be done, then the CO doesn't get issued. That's the whole...
For these two stores? Only they're asking for two COs?
I know that, but there's no guarantee, even if the Advance Auto and the Aldi store gets built, what is the guarantee that the rest of the facility will get built? We don't know that yet.
I know.
For a point of clarification, for a point of clarification, could we, instead of talking in percentages and one and a half times, et cetera, what's the proposed bond amount?
He doesn't know. He didn't figure it out.
Okay. And what's the difference? So we don't know either number.
Let's see, let's see the rest of the board. Jake, what do you think?
No questions right now.
Jen?
I mean, I'm inclined to go with the recommendation of Mr. Rowley.
I'm not.
Okay, I guess we pull a vote. So...
There's other property that has to be built there.
Right.
We hold them to the fire on that, if they don't get it done.
Use the mic.
This is a simple majority vote. It doesn't need four out of five.
What are we voting on?
Based on this one, the 386-708.
No, it's 411. They revised figures that came in today.
I don't have...
50 percent was 411,000.
Yeah, I read it in my computer, but I don't have it. Do you have a copy of that? Ken, one?
I think that number was the first amount.
This is the new one?
Yeah, this is the revised.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So what are we gonna vote on? We're gonna, if we accept, if somebody makes a motion to accept the bond for 411-608, to issue an occupancy, the maturity of the bond, two years, okay? Two years maturity. And if we agree to this, if the board vote yes, they could go to the selectmen, get it approved, and get occupancy for Aldi's and AutoZone, correct?
Yes.
Okay, somebody wanna make a motion?
I make a motion, we accept it for the 411-608 bond.
I second that motion.
Any discussion on that? I would say I would add the two-year maturity. Okay, so I have a second by Jim. Motion by Carl, second by Jim. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose?
Oppose.
Oppose, so 4, oppose, so 4-1-0, opposes Jen. Okay, that carries.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
Could you just put it on record that I made the recommendation that it include the final paving?
Absolutely.
And that it is not included in your vote?
Okay.
So moved.
Okay, so Jasmine, can you make sure you get that in the minutes? Thank you. All right, that's done. And you wanna, on 31-17, you wanna get a continuance?
Aye, yes. And if we could talk a little bit about that, I don't know if there's the right time to do that, or if we should wait?
If you wanna talk, you have to wait. If you just wanna continuance, I get you on your way.
We'll talk later.
We'll wait?
Yes.
Okay, very well.
Okay. 35-17.
All right. Public hearing, 35-17.
One pass, take one, pass one. One, two, three, four. One, two, three, four. This is brand new. This has to be read in. Is that correct?
That's brand new.
The zoning board of appeals to hold a public hearing on October 25th, 2017, at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wayham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wayham, Mass., 02571, to consider petition number 35-17 for a special permit slash variance from the requirements of Article 6, Table 621, and Article 13, Section 1335 of the Wayham zoning bylaws to James Caporicio, care of Leonard Bello, 184 Main Street, Wayham, Mass., 02571, seeking to raise and reconstruct a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling to a larger footprint than what currently exists, located at 5 Albatros Avenue, Wayham, Mass., that's on Assessors Map 120, Lot 79, in the R-130 zoning district.
All right, very good. Just for the record, I recuse myself. I have some business with Lenny, so Jim, the Chair, take it over.
Go ahead, Lenny. Would you like to tell us what you're gonna do?
First of all, good evening. With me is Mr. and Mrs. Caporicio. I've given you a package, as I usually do. There's a letter of intent in that package, which addresses the statutory issues, and gives you some background to the situation. So Mr. and Mrs. Caporicio are not new to the Wayham area. They've been, had family members here since 1956. And Jim purchased this particular lot in approximately 25 years ago, in 1992. He purchased, it was the second home that was used as a vacation spot for him and his family. And like many others, after time goes on, what they hope to do is make this their retirement home, and hopefully have the finances in order to reconstruct it and make it somewhat more livable than a vacation spot. So Jim is now 66 years of age. The time has come. He finds himself in a position where he's able to do this. The property in question is located in what has now become an R-130 district. When the area known as Wayham Lake Shore Drive, or Wayham Lake Shores, which is where this property is located, when it was first developed in 1951, a buildable lot needed to have 65 feet of frontage and 6,500 square feet of area. Subsequent zoning changes have taken place, first in 1966, when it went from 6,500 square feet to 10,000, and then in 1971, when it went to 30,000. A recent change, or the most recent change, required 200 feet of frontage and 130,000 square feet in area. There are no lots in Wayham Lake Shores that satisfy that zoning requirement. All of the homes that were, that are constructed, were constructed on pre-existing non-conforming lots ranging from 6,500 square feet to 12,000 square feet. Again, no lots meet the current zoning area or setback requirements of 130,000 square foot area. The petitioners are seeking to demolish the existing structure, increase the footprint of the home, add a second floor, and a 24-foot garage. The home will remain a three-bedroom home as it is now. However, all of the rooms will be substantially larger to accommodate family, guests, and comfortable year-round living. The Director of Inspeccional Services denial letter points out that the dwelling is a pre-existing non-conforming structure. Like all other of the dwellings in the area, it doesn't satisfy the dimensional requirements. The petitioner needs a special permit, unless the board finds that a rebuild would be more detrimental to the area, in which case then a variance would be required. Mr. Caporicio purchased the lot on which the house sits in 1992, and then in 1994, he purchased adjoining lots, Lot 1,000 and 1,001, both being vacant properties. For zoning purposes, all three of these lots have combined, resulting in Mr. Caporicio having a lot which now has 190 feet of frontage rather than 65, 59,000 square feet in area rather than 11,500. It is by far the largest lot in Wayham Lake Shores. The proposed structural additions will not increase the current front nor sideline setbacks. Other homes of similar size have been built in Wayham Lake Shores on lots less than half the size of this. A substantial number of those homes I have provided you with photos of in our in-house package, I believe it's Schedule E. The petitioner contends, as do I, that this really is a special permit, which is the standard to be used. There has been no substantial increase in the non-conforming nature of the structure, as the lot size itself has been more than doubled. There has been no increase to the non-conformity to either the front or sideline setbacks. Reconstruction and extension of the existing structure will not be detrimental to the neighborhood, but quite to the contrary, will enhance and improve the neighborhood and also all of the property values. What the petitioner is proposing is exactly what the neighborhood would hope to have happen to all of the structures which, over the years, have fallen into disrepair in this area. Should the board be of the opinion that a variance is required, I will address the statutory conditions. First and foremost, this is a unique lot because of its size, because of its shape. It's by far the largest lot in all of the area. Refusing the request of relief would result in a very restricted use of the land and also present a hardship to the petitioners, who have thought of this property, and when they bought it, as something they would be able to expand and would be able to use as a permanent residence at some point in time. While I recognize that the board is not bound to follow prior decisions, this is almost exactly like a case I presented on behalf of a local firefighter, Mr. Cunningham, who built a two-car garage onto his home in an R-130 area, but conformed to the setback requirements that were in existence at the time that he purchased the property, and then required 20-foot setbacks and not the 100-foot setback that an R-130 district requires. I think if you look at the building, and the building commissioner's denial letter, you'll see that he more or less agrees that it's a special permit being requested.
Just for the record, Jake Morrison will be voted in my place.
The engineer and architect who designed the plan is here. If there are any questions on the plan, they can be directed to him. But I think you'll see the setbacks are no more detrimental than they were originally. Here has been taken to conform to whatever was in existence at the time that the lots were created.
Thank you. Is there anybody here this evening that would like to speak in favor of this application? Come on ahead, ma'am. Come up, get close to a microphone, name and address, and any dialogue you'd like to add.
My name is Yvonne Kinsman, and I live at 83 Wayham Lake Shore Drive. Okay? Many people in the neighborhood have built houses bigger than what Caporicios wanna do. Granted, it was before they changed it to the three-acre and then went back, or whatever. I was here a couple of years ago requesting to add on to my property. I don't remember now whether it was a special permit or a variance that was granted, but I added 400 square feet in a garage to my home. We have, and I know you have pictures, of several big, big homes in the neighborhood. And what the Caporicios wanna do is gonna improve the neighborhood. We're trying desperately to clean up the rundown houses. And these people are very willing to spend the money and do it. I hope you agree.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here that would like to speak in favor of this application? Hearing none, I'll move to anybody that may be here to object to this application. Again, hearing none, I'll move to the board. Wilma, do you have any questions of this applicant?
I have none of the applicant, but in our zoning bylaws, it says, family dwelling are not allowed. Unless they are approved by us. And I can't see changing the footprint. Sorry, when we were, we've always, anybody that's raised a house and wanted to rebuild it, they've always rebuilt on the footprint. And as far as I'm concerned, that's...
Okay.
My...
Thank you. Moving in the other direction, and to my far left, Jake, do you have any questions or comments?
I think the plan looks good. I think it'll be much better than what's there. All right, a sec.
Thank you. Jen?
So in sum, the argument for the premise that there's no substantial increase in the non-conforming nature is that what we have now is an even larger lot.
Twice the size.
Twice the size. And is there any increase at all with respect to the front and side? None. Okay.
The, one side, one side actually is now three feet further away from the sideline.
Uh-huh.
The other sideline is where he added all the property. There's a huge space between that sideline and the new lot line, which has been created by the combining of three lots.
Okay.
They don't even show it.
Same with the front.
So there's no increase in any non-conformity? We just have the remaining issue of the fact that by virtue of the substantial changes in the requirements, not this house as it exists now, existed before, exists now with additional, the additional two lots he purchased. It's never gonna comply with this. So, yeah, so, okay.
There's no way you could get it to comply with current zoning. There's no lots in the entire area that even come close. But the amount of open space here is probably just as great or greater than the amount of open space that existed when he initially built on a 11,000-square-foot lot.
Oh.
Now got a 59,000-square-foot lot. So it's really, you know, more than four times as big.
I don't have any other questions.
Carl?
I have no problem. I think it's good for...
I think it's worthy to note, and I may be wrong on this, but I believe all these changes in zoning, the intention was in the creation of new lots within this district to set a standard for newly-created lots. I think this board has discussed on numerous occasions an oversight or lack of condition within the bylaw that would provide for some of these existing neighborhoods. That's just my little two cents worth on this issue.
If I may say something?
Go ahead. I did skip over you, but go ahead.
That's okay. I think based on the evidence that Attorney Bello presented, I think a special permit is adequate in this case, and a relief for 621 and 1335 is adequate. And because I, as a finding, I don't think it's a race in the bill. And because I, as a finding, I don't think it's erasing the bill, what's there and building this is any detriment for the neighborhood, so I think it's feasible, very feasible as a special permit.
Well, without belaboring the point, would anybody like to make a motion?
You might close the hearing first.
You ped me?
You might close the hearing before you make a motion.
I, I'd make a motion to close the public hearing.
Anybody want to second that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so we're closed to the public. Would anybody like to make a motion in favor or in objection to this application?
I would make, I would make a motion to approve a special permit based on the evidence that's been presented. I do not see that there's any substantial increase in the non-conforming nature. And based on the testimony here from neighbors and photographs, I certainly don't see any way to find that there's any detriment to the neighborhood. So based on those, based on that, I would make a motion to approve a special permit.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jake. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
I think it passes 4-1-0. Thank you for your time. Oh, I like it when you play clerk. Do I have any, do you want to pass me back your folders? You don't have to pass them back.
Thank you, Jake.
This doesn't go in here. This does.
Why, you want to buy it? How's he looking for, you know?
Keep them separate from each other. Do you have anything to pass back on that last one? Yeah. He's writing.
What's his name?
Lockwood.
Lockwood. Lenny? Lockwood, Mr. Lockwood. Just what date your plan is? Can you give a date on your plan?
I have a date on mine, right there, it should be 7:15.
You drafted those on 7:15? Okay, thank you. That's all.
That's all we wanted to know. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
Any good salesman knows when they say yes, stop talking. Bear with us, folks, we like to get one thing put away before we start another because the secretary gets angry when things are in the wrong file and she can't find them. So don't the applicants. Jake, let's get this signed. Let's do it, man.
Yes, sir.
That's the chairman thing. Yep. Wilma, you have the last to sign, and if you guys will take care of that, throw it back, I'll start reading.
All right, Petition 36-17, Ken Deluse to Agawam Beach Road.
The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on October 25, 2017 at 6:30 p.m. in room 320 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., 02571. To consider Petition Number 36-17 for a special permit slash variance from the requirements of Article 6, Table 621, and Article 16 of the Wareham zoning bylaws to Ken Deluse, 5 Davis Lane, Wareham, Mass., 02571. Seeking to construct a single-family home on a lot that does not have 180-foot of frontage located at 2 Agawam Beach Road, Wareham, Mass., assesses map 19, Lot J3 in the R-60 zoning district.
Is Ken Deluse here?
Come forward, please. Let's see, do we have anything to be passed out? We do. Two this way, here you go. One, two, three, four. I'm going to leave one on your desk, here you go.
All right, so name and address for the record, please.
Kenneth Deluse, 5 Davis Lane, Wareham, Mass.
Sir?
Bach Warner, his son-in-law.
Okay. All right, you want to let us know what are you, what are you planning to do?
Well, I went to purchase this house a lot, and the person that owned it said that it had already gone through the paperwork. They, he had a building permit to build this on this particular lot. There was a seven-house subdivision, there were four houses already up. This particular one, he had a building permit to build 2003, does the foundation, and times got bad, he stopped, filled the hole in, put it up for sale a couple of months ago. I'd plan on building the exact same house that he was, which is a, there's a covenants in these seven-house, division 22,000-square-foot house, two-car garage, three cars, two and a half, three miles. And when I went down there to apply for the building permit, the building department said that it ran out, and with the statue or whatever.
I'm sorry, what ran out, sir? I was half a...
That he had.
Okay, from 2003.
Yes, because this is 2003, 2004, and they said that, in his opinion, this is the letter that he said that it was a non-conforming, but the engineer work and everything was done in 2003.
Looking for the current...
Occupied as a seven-house subdivision. Four houses were built, and three were left, and this is one of the three. So they said in the letter that was sent to me and the owner, said in my opinion that it's non-conforming, and what they're saying is that it has the 170 feet that you need for frontage.
Same thing.
Part of it is on Agawam Beach Road, the other portion is on Great Neck.
You're just buying one lot?
Yes.
Correct.
Yes.
So you bought Lot 3?
Lot 3, yes.
You bought it already?
Well, I was right up until this point when this happened.
So you're under agreement, you're going to close if they, if we say yes, you'll buy it, if we say no, you won't.
That's exactly right.
Is that another from David?
No, this is the old 2003.
David, David? Can you give this gentleman a letter?
Are you familiar with this case?
Mildly.
Mildly?
This happened before I actually came down. We have, we have a provision in our bylaw that says if you have, if you have a corner lot, that you can only count the frontage from the center pointing at the lot back, so you can only count one-half of the frontage essentially. So he has the frontage, but because of that provision in our bylaw, you can only count half the frontage.
You can't add up both sides?
No.
The point of intersection to the two street lines, and you count the longest one.
Who did this? JF?
JF Engineering had done the A and R plan.
How come he has nothing here?
So that's, excuse me, I was unaware of that bylaw. That's in our bylaws? Do you happen to know where?
Yep, it's, it's in the definitions, lot frontage, I believe.
Bear with us, because we just want to, we like to learn, too.
I actually have it here now. Lot front, lot lines are in the case of corner lots.
What page?
Give us the page, please.
It says in the case of corner lots, the distance between one side lot line and the midpoint of the corner arc length.
Sign, tag, sign, solid. Page 121?
That's the new book, so you may not... That's in the new book, so if you just go to lot frontage.
As in alphabetically L?
Yep. So in your book, it's on page 118, 117, all the way at the bottom.
That was in 87.
Lot frontage, okay.
That's something else, but it has to get changed. That's new to me.
So he has adequate frontage just because of that one provision in the bylaw? That's why he's before you today.
So the only, the only thing...
He has or he does not?
He does.
The only thing stopping him from being able to build is a farm A lot is the fact that we can't count all his frontage because of this wording.
If I didn't write him a new letter, I didn't have any file for him to, so that tells me that I didn't write him a new letter, and if there were any other issues outstanding, I would have written him a new letter. I believe that he, he has a conforming lot, but as I said, just because of that one provision in the bylaw that measures to the center arc, we're only allowed to count half of his frontage.
So he doesn't have a conforming lot?
Aside from that provision, is what I said, right.
That's the only issue.
That's the only issue.
That's a big issue.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I look at that plan again?
I want to point out that a variance was received.
In 2003.
In 2003.
It was granted?
Was granted, yes. But that has passed its time of application.
What was the hardship back then, do you know?
Wasn't that only one lot?
It was due to the size, shape, and configuration of the lots. Strict adherence to the corner lot frontage is not possible. It would result in a substantial hardship and a loss of sale revenue associated with the corner lot. Given the fact that only, the frontage is only 4.09 feet short of the required frontage, the additional feet of frontage provided on Agawam Beach in a variance request is not a significant derogation of the intent and purpose of the design by law.
Is there anyone in the audience who want to speak in favor of that? Anyone against their neighbor? Want to come forward, please?
This is the one.
Name and address, please.
Christine Clarkson, 132 Great Neck Road.
And that's David Clarkson, 132 Great Neck.
Okay, you the lot four?
Yes.
Or three?
Right beside that lot.
If you're looking at the lot, you to the right?
Um, left.
Do you front, neck, Great Neck Road or Agawam Beach?
The left.
132 Great Neck Road.
Okay, okay.
Direct to butter.
Okay. Go ahead.
When we bought the property, there was covenants on the property, you know, frontage and all that, and we're just, you know, curious.
Well, we, when we bought the property, it was $210,000, which was a lot of money.
Excuse me, which property are you referring to? Lot two?
Lot 132.
And we decided to put that much money, pay for that much money because of the frontage, and we didn't want houses real close to us, and now I think it's what, like 110?
110, did it sell?
So it's...
What was...
There's a lot of 110,000, it dropped down 100,000, I believe.
Well, if we made the deal.
Yeah, but you know, it's covenants on the property, I think.
Yeah, and like you just said in the last case, there's a reason why you break up the lots for the certain frontage.
Do you mind showing me which one's your lot here? If you don't mind.
And I wanted to know where he was going to place the house because...
One sec, we'll get to this in a minute. That's your lot?
Yes.
Where's your house, roughly?
Right about here. It's about 180 feet back. His, the way they're doing it would be like right here, kind of like on top of our, I'll figure.
And what's this maintenance season that goes through your property?
There must be hard drainage. Drainages, probably.
Okay.
And I think he has the frontage on Great Neck Road, he just doesn't have the frontage on Agawam, and if he builds a house on Agawam, like the back of his house is going to be like our view. And I think it's going to depreciate the value of our house. Like, I'd like to see where the house is going to be placed on the lot.
Right. Do you, right. Do you know, sir, like, there's some, excuse, sir, sir, excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Look. You got to talk to us, not to the, to your neighbor. Do you have, do you aware, like, to prove a variance, like, the hardship you have to, there's some statue?
Then turn around.
Some statues you have to follow? Are you aware of that?
Well, there's a covenant here. There is a covenant. I'm going to build a bigger house than...
This is not what you're here for.
Yeah.
You're here for frontage, you asking for a variance. There's a statue for a variance you have to meet. Are you aware of that?
No, I wasn't, because like I said, he, this was already passed.
Yeah, but it died.
2003.
Right.
So I mean, when he, when I went to him and, when he put the lot up for sale and I approached him, and he said everything is all set, until I asked, well, I've got to go down to town and check and see if I can get a builder. I've already gone through this town with one piece. And I said, let me go down, and this is, and he says, well, what are you talking about? And I said, this is what the town said, here's the letter, that because of the time, the time that expired, nothing's changed, everything else is the same. If that house would have been built and sold, if they had built and bought, whatever. I had looked at these lots 12 years ago, and I built around the corner because I got a better lot of, and whatever.
I'll pass this by the board, by my recommendation is, the guy who owns it now, he has to come here and prove the statue of a variance. You buying it, you don't have no, you don't have a hardship. I would recommend the owner comes here with an attorney and some real plans for house plans and stuff. It doesn't mean we're granting it, but it's a tough case.
Yeah.
So that's my, my opinion, but we'll ask the board one by one, and maybe they feel different. Wilma?
Can I just say one thing? There's two other lots that do conform.
It's irrelevant, it's irrelevant. Go ahead, Wilma.
Well, from what I can see is the gentleman doesn't own the lot, and he has no intentions of buying the lot unless we approve, and I can't see approving anything until the deed's in the gentleman's name. He applied for it in his name to...
The variance runs with the land and not with the owner.
Right. Are we done with input from the public?
But that's a special permit, too.
Jimmy, what do you want to say?
I have no questions.
Jake? Jake?
No questions.
Jen?
I don't know, I agree with what you said earlier, Mazi.
You, you agree or you not?
I do agree, yeah.
Yeah, Martha.
Martha?
No.
Anyone in, anymore in the audience want to speak against or in favor?
What is the frontage, uh, on one, on Great Neck Road opposed to the frontage on Agawam?
He's had, he has fifty-five, fifty-five and eighty-five, uh, st- one forty plus.
So he has one forty on Great Neck Road? I just don't want to look at the back of a house. I mean, we paid a lot of money for this lot, for the house, and if he builds it on great, on Agawam, like, his backyard's gonna be in my front yard. It does, it's gonna look terrible.
The, the matter here is whether he could build or not. If the ma- if he could build, he could build anyway he wants, if he can build, so it's irrelevant if he... This is not what the case is here. If you look at his back, how, the back or the front, it's irrelevant. Sir, go ahead, Mr. Lewis, what do you want to say?
Oh, I was just telling him, if, if, uh, it doesn't, I would build it on Great Neck. That's a, a bigger, better street than Agawam is. It doesn't, the...
It's moot.
I have the plans, I, like I said, he had the foundation already set to build. I don't know if you remember.
Excuse me, ew, excuse me, hello. Excuse me, hello. You gotta, you can't talk to each other.
Talk to the board, you don't talk to each other.
Go ahead.
And like I said, the whole...
But that was two thousand three, and the variance is good for a year.
Yes.
And things changes. I'm sorry, but my recommendation, you go, the owner of the, a good thing you didn't buy it.
Yeah, well.
So I recommend, the, the guy who owns it comes, come here and with some strong argument.
Okay.
You know, so...
I would, I would, I would like to add that I would suggest that the applicant withdraw, have requested that he withdraw without prejudice, and that therefore the, the owner of the property could come back.
If it's a different applicant.
We don't want to take a vote and deny him for coming back in two years.
If it's a different applicant.
Okay, it doesn't matter. Okay.
Anything else you want to say?
No, that's it.
Anyone else want to say anything? Okay, I'd like to, here are none. I'd like to move to close the pop-.
So moved.
Motion to close, second by Jen to close public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, it's closed. What's the wishes?
I'd like a motion to, um, to dismiss this and not, not make a motion, not make a, a yea or a nay.
Just to dismiss it?
I, I'd, I'd like to see the applicant withdraw, so, so that we have the proper applicant in front of us.
Well, a different applicant could come. The problem would be, I think, is if he did buy the property, you try to come back.
I guess, I guess we could vote on it and deny him, and then the other guy could come back. So that said, I make a motion to approve. We can all vote no if we want, or yes.
He has a motion to grant. Do I have a second?
Second.
To grant what?
To grant the variance.
How can you grant the variance? It's good.
Yeah.
We're voting on it, and you're all going to talk.
This is us. Okay. You have a second. All in favor to grant, say aye. Jen?
I'm not in favor of granting.
So she's no. He's a yes. I'm a no.
I'm a no.
No, so it's four, it's, it didn't pass.
Application's denied.
Sorry about that. So it's four, you get only one vote, yes, and four, no. So you need four, yes. So thank you very much. Sorry. So like, I suggest have the owner come there.
All right, thank you.
How many say evening?
One four zero.
Motion to grant, sorry.
Reason for motion to grant.
Sorry.
Was this unaccounted for?
Findings did not meet statutory requirement.
Thanks, Ken.
Didn't meet statutory requirements for variance. Statuism for variance and MGL. What's a variance, section ten or forty-eight? What, Ken?
Is that two different counts?
It's section ten, isn't it?
Oh, okay.
And that, for a...
It, it does appear to be a mess.
No, variance.
MGL.
Section ten, right?
Ten, yes.
Okay, chapter forty-eight, section ten. Forty-eight. So he didn't read the files.
Okay, just sign it. Oh, we gotta sign it.
Okay.
Whoever denied, write denied next to his name, please.
Man, we got another place to sign, don't we? Both pages?
No, no, no deny here.
Okay. There you go. Gotcha.
Just signed on, just done it, and I said yes, right? Did you say? Jen?
Yep.
Sign that, deny, please. All right, uh...
Jacob, Jake was not voted on this, right?
No, Wilma.
I don't.
Make sure it's denied, please, next.
Wilma. This is the next one. One, two, three, four. This is the next one.
All right, uh, petition thirty-seven dash seventeen, Carlos and Mary Estevs, Steve's seven, Steve's seven.
Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on October twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen, at six thirty P M in room three twenty of the Wareham Multiservice on our forty-eight Marion Road, Wareham, Massachusetts, zero two five seven one, to consider petition number thirty-seven dash seventeen for a special permit slash variance from the requirements of Article Six, Table six twenty-one, and Article thirteen, Section thirteen thirty-five of the Wareham zoning bylaws to Carlos and Mary Estevs, twenty-two R Pilgrim Way, Walpole, Mass, zero two zero three two, seeking to construct a full-length dorma on a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling located at Seven Beach Street, Wareham, Mass. That's on Wareham Assessors map fifty D, lot twenty, in the R thirty zoning district.
Name and address for the record, and tell us what you're doing.
Uh, number Seven Beach Street.
And your name?
My name is Carlos Estevs. That's my wife, Mary.
Seven Beach Street.
Okay, and what are you planning to do, sir?
The existing cottage has a very low pitched roof. I'm trying to change it. Do a cape in the front and a full dorma within the same footprint of the existing structure.
Okay. So you're just raising the roof to a full dorma?
I'm not gonna go over the, the, anything over, I'm not going through, I'm not gonna, it's just within the same footprint.
Okay. So, just like the same case with Attorney Bello, he's seeking a relief from six twenty-one, I believe, and thirteen thirty-five.
Yep.
It's the board discretion to give him a relief as a special permit versus a a variance if seems not detrimental to the neighborhood.
I believe it's a special permit.
Okay, uh, Wilma, what do you want to say?
I just, um, he hasn't, he hasn't got any measurement on, in here at all on the size of the dorma. I mean, it's, and, or even the size of the house for we could know that he's putting the dorma in, complying to the house. I mean, there's nothing, where is the dorma?
Do you have architectural plans, sir?
Yeah, I do. It was supplied in the, the surveyor.
No, plans for the house. House plans, do you have?
I do. Actually, it's all the dimensions. I think it was there.
We look.
Just turn around, it's, no, no. Okay, let me see it, please.
The dimensions are twenty-two by thirty, exactly the same as the original structure.
Okay. Now, now that's what's in there? Or you gotta raise this?
Well, that's the dorma. That's how it's gonna look like. What's there, I supplied pictures. Actually, it's a low pitched roof.
Okay. All right, we don't have this, but we'll pass it, sure.
You want to see that?
I got pictures, I got pictures.
Yeah, I'd like the picture.
Copy in one.
You want to see it?
Yeah.
Ken's copying copies of these.
Ken's making us some copies, I guess.
There's a bunch of pictures. That's the, the house.
Yeah.
That's my left side neighbor, my right side neighbor.
Yeah.
My rear neighbor.
Still, this, this is hand drawn.
Let's see which one's the house, this is his.
This is his, that's his neighbor.
That's his.
And he's risen the dorm, the roof like that.
Straight up.
Yeah, straight up.
He has some headroom.
Straight up. So there's the other neighbor.
First floor's still the same.
It's not going out any further.
It looked like the shed between the three neighbors.
Beach Street, this is in, this is, uh, Beach Street. I know where this is. Okay. This is right on the beach, um, in Swift's Beach, if you will.
Swift's Beach, yes.
Yeah.
Are you on stilts?
Nope, I'm the only one. Okay, I mean, of those three.
Survived the hurricane.
Well, actually, the one on the right side is not on stilts, it's a high foundation, but it's not stilts. Bob didn't get to us.
Thank you. Very lucky.
What number, Beach Street are you?
Number seven.
Number seven.
That was one, his copy you took from me. This is his copy.
Okay. How, how much the value of the improvement you point, any idea?
That's about twenty-five, twenty-eight thousand dollars. At the move.
What's the house tax, that? What's the assessment of the town?
Sixty?
Is he putting us on the back end of the dorma?
Can we keep this?
Yes, sir.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience who want to speak in favor or against this project? Okay, I hear none. Jake, you want to say something?
Not at this time.
Jen?
No.
Jen? Carl?
No, I'm good.
You're good?
I'm fine.
Jen?
Okay.
You're good?
You guys, sorry, you guys have a house located in front of you, a pretty substantial, big house in front of you?
I'm the shed between the three, yeah.
Okay. There's making sure I'm looking at the right house.
Are you waterfront or are you across the street from the water?
Waterfront is Robbie Road. Robbie Street.
Street over is Robbie Road, and we're on Beach Street.
Let me look at this again, I might have... Like, it, doesn't Beach Street have some waterfront?
No.
Okay. Good thing I'm not trusting anybody.
Are you in a flood zone? You pay flood insurance?
No, because I own it.
I own it.
Okay. Yep, okay, okay, I know exactly where it is. I know exactly where it is.
Just going in the front or the back?
Ken, you want to say something? No?
No.
I just have one question. Is this, is this gonna be a front dorma or a back?
It's a back dorm.
Yeah, he's making a full shed in the back. It's a cape, it's like a cape, and I guess he's making a full shed.
I don't want to be detrimental to the neighborhood.
It's re- it's, it's currently, it's a, it's a small ranch. You're gonna tear the whole roof off, go from like a six pitch to a twelve pitch with a full dorma on the back.
That's exactly what it is.
It's gonna make it look a cape.
No more, no less, within the same footprint.
It's a ranch, gonna be a cape.
Yeah.
And it's gonna be...
That's right, exactly, that's how I phrase it.
I got it. And if you were doing more than, I don't know if this is true, I've heard it uttered a bunch of times, if you're doing more than fifty percent
Why he's not?
the value, you gotta go up on stilts, but he's not, so he doesn't have to, is that?
That's a...
That's not a, that's not a...
That's the commission, I should get this. But he said it's only twenty-five thousand improvement in his house, it's assessed fifty, so...
Okay.
So he's way less than that.
Well, one of the reasons I'm doing that is because I'm having problems with the basement, the moisture. And all my, you know, the furnaces and stuff are running away, and I had to change it through upstairs.
Okay. Anyone want to add anything else? I hear none. Like to close the public hearing.
Pass, so moved.
I have a second to close.
Second?
Second by Carl. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain. Okay, does, uh, the next question will be, does the board believe we should get a relief of, uh, from the section thirteen thirty-five, and we treat it as a va- as a special permit?
I do.
Okay, so we have a motion by Jim to treat it as a special permit. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any discussion on that? We have none, so that passes. Now the special permit. Need some findings and a motion.
We don't have a plan to put into the file other than this, this small Howard Millard.
No, just leave that, and, and, uh, we're gonna put this one here.
Yeah, that's in here already. Okay. So I, I move to grant as presented.
Okay, based, I, I would agree with this, saying the findings, saying that it's not detrimental to the neighborhood. That's our findings, so... And based on that, he makes a motion, Jim makes a motion to grant as presented. Do I have any discussion on that and conditions? Anyone want to put some conditions on that? Okay, so we just move, so the motion to grant
Leave a second.
as presented. Do I have a second first? Well, let's add for the motion, based on plans drafted by Colonial Engineering, Inc., at Medway, Mass., and dated June twenty-six, two thousand seventeen.
And Howard Millard.
And Howard Millard, consulting engineer for the plan. There's no date, uh, it is June thirteen, uh, dated June thirteen, two thousand seventeen. So based on these plans, that's Jim's motion. Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Second by Jen. All in favor? Does that motion say aye?
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain. Five zeros, zero. Wilma? You abstain or oppose, or yes?
I abstain.
She abstains, so five...
Four z- four zero one.
Four zero one. Four zero one. Okay, just add these dates.
Uh, plan.
Oh, it carries. Thank you, you're good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good one.
Didn't have a plan.
And what's the other one? Six twenty-six, two thousand.
Colonial Engineering.
He didn't, and, 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 and no measurements.
And this one is Millard.
And who lived there, the nu- the number of the plan, what made it, whoever drew it.
The measurements are here, it's very clear.
But it isn't, I'm talking about the plot plan.
Oh, it's right here, it's, it's a, it's a certified surveyor.
But it, there was no, um...
Staying in the same footprint.
It's the same foot- plan.
No lots on each side, no, uh...
Showing the lots next door?
Yeah, I mean, it didn't.
But the subject, it is a certified surveyor.
But I mean, you still, it's still not showing.
Okay. All right, well, let's put this on the file. Oh, we gotta sign it.
Yeah, it's, Carl's got it, he's signing.
She'll be right back.
Pass the one, I see.
Did you, you, you abstaining on this one?
Wilma is, Wilma.
No worries. You signed it already, I wasn't watching. You signed it already, I wasn't watching.
Okay. Endos Carlos.
Indigo.
And Mary. Okay, continued public hearing. Thirty-one dash seventeen, Jay Donigan, Cranberry Highway.
Do you make that specific, Buller Engineering, and Zach Richards is with me as well. We're ultimately requesting a continuance on this, uh, site plan modification that we've submitted to you. But we've had several continuances for various reasons, and we just wanted to kinda update you on where things are, um, and discuss a couple of procedure matters, procedural matters. When we'd initially filed that site plan modification request, we were trying to get some approvals in place before winter set in, so we could hopefully get some construction done. And we had a lease that was pretty close with a tenant that has since not gotten that close. So, we're seeing if that's gonna solidify a little bit, and we might have some other changes coming to the site plan. So, rather than work through those now, we'd like to request a continuance, so that we could have some time to figure that out. And it might be that we wanna request another continuance, and put this thing off a month. One of the changes that we're contemplating is we've gotten a lot of interest from some restaurants to put at the corner, where we had originally had a bank.
Okay.
And those would have a drive-through component to it. Which, to do that, we'd have to file a variance application. Which, it just gets a little unusual if we have a variance application with a site plan modification that's out there, so we're looking for a little bit of guidance, you've been very good in being clear with us, we're trying to be good in being clear with you, as well. And it might be that that doesn't even come to fruition, we need some time to figure that out. But really looking for feedback, because we could end up with a couple different processes running simultaneously, which isn't that unusual, but it is a little unusual that one started...
You want feedback on a variance for a drive-through?
I don't know if feedback is appropriate for...
Right.
...variance, but he's talking about procedure, at this point.
Well, you do, you have to just file a separate application for a variance. For a feedback, unless it's before us, I don't know, in my opinion, I don't know what to say. What kind of restaurant, or what kind of...
Sure.
Fast food.
I think that, if I may...
Go ahead.
I think the question is, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, this issue has come up multiple times before, not with this applicant. There is a zoning bylaw right now that says no drive-throughs. And grumblings or rumblings, or scuttlebutt, or water fountain chatter, however you wanna put it, have it that opinions have changed. So as a developer, I would assume that this applicant is saying, what's the current tone of the town? Do you hate drive-throughs, do you love drive-throughs, or do you tolerate drive-throughs? Are you gonna change your zoning bylaws, or, you know? And, and I think that's a, a fair question, personally. If I was trying to develop a site in the multimillion dollar category, and I had invested multi-millions of dollars, and I was trying to negotiate, I surely wouldn't wanna expend many, many hours of attorney time and engineer time to develop a site for a drive-through restaurant. Name unknown, unnecessary, only to find out that the town's just gonna say, well, thank you for spending eight hundred thousand developing this site, but no. So, I think it's fair for them to ask, what's the tone? And if, and if, if you don't wanna give them your answer, that's okay. I'm willing to voice my opinion, and my opinion is, I think it's a bad bylaw. And if it ever comes in front of me, a request for a drive-through, I will do everything I can in favor of a drive-through. That's my personal opinion. What the rest of the board feels, or is willing to say, is up to the rest of the board.
Very good. Anybody wants to express his opinion?
I, I would just have to go by the statutory construct. I mean, I'm sure that you have familiarity with applying for variances, and I'm pretty strict with respect to the statutory construct. I also think that there probably would be, uh, some, um, opposition that would show up, uh, to any such hearing, based on my feel for what the climate is with respect to drive-throughs in that part of town. That's my two cents.
Jake, what do you wanna say?
I have nothing to add at this time.
What's that?
Nothing to add.
Oh.
I have nothing.
Yeah. Okay, uh, anyone in the pub, in the audience wanna speak in favor or against?
Well, it's not a hearing.
Well, it's continued public hearing.
It is a public hearing.
It is a continued public hearing. We're not talking about drive-through, how about continuance?
Speak for us, continuing it?
Were they here to continue it?
Oh, yeah, I would be happy to, uh, grant to continue.
Well, I just wanna ask anybody in the audience if they are against, or in favor, to continue. And regarding the drive-through, we'll look at the plan, I have no problems myself, we'll see how it goes.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think the guidance you can probably help them with is, in terms of their applications, and what they should be submitting. The idea of the use variance being, for a drive-through, being a, uh, a sep- potentially a separate issue, but related to the site plan modification that's coming through, and so should they be considered together?
I think it's a separate, yeah.
It's a sep- completely separate application, they're gonna, that spot, originally, they left the so- the spot separate. We're not gonna incorporate it with the site plan, so it's gonna be separate. If we grant the variance or not. Once we, if we grant the variance, then they're gonna see how they're gonna incorporate it with the site plan. Do you understand?
That's what the guidance they wanted.
What?
That's the guidance they wanted.
Well, this is the thing, say they make, uh, some restaurant that attracts a thousand people a day, and it's gonna impact the whole site plan, but that's a different story, so we gotta see the impact on the whole site plan. Understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, now you wanna consider them together, then?
Well, we're gonna consider, if we're gonna give the variance first, if, if it's a go, then they go ahead and work on the site plan. Then they spend all their money to configure all the site plan.
Mr. Chairman?
Does that make sense? Yeah?
Didn't you vote that what they're trying to do with building B did not require, was not a substantial change, and that it did not require a public hearing?
Building B being the unb- the bank, yeah, if it doesn't have a var- if it doesn't have a drive-through.
You, you voted, as I recall it, that
Right.
the change of the permit which they got would be simply for a change that was not substantial.
Right.
It would seem to me that if you're now going to include another building that has a drive-through that's not even allowed, you've got to look at that again, in terms of whether or not it's a, a significant change, and it would seem to me that it would be.
Right.
Or you would have to apply a separate application for a variance for that corner.
That's what I'm trying to say, we're gonna see if we're gonna grant the variance. If, if the variance is granted, it's gonna incorporate with the whole site plan, because it's gonna make a major impact, and well, if it's a business that attracts twenty cars a day...
But you're working on the terms of an existing special permit that doesn't have anything to do with the drive-in. My point is that you would have to have a separate application process, and I don't see how you could consider the variance for a drive-in under the conditions that you suggested to yourselves, that it would be a non-substantial change to go from building B that had a ninety-foot length to a hundred and thirty-five foot length. That's an entirely different thing. I don't see how you can combine the two under what you voted to do, which was a non-public hearing change to the special permit.
I'm, I'm not following you, we, we're not chang- we're not talking about size, the size of the building. As I recall, they left...
What they've asked for continuance was for that portion of the hearing.
For the size of the buildings.
Correct.
Right.
And the only thing that, that they had asked for at that time was to consider whether or not it was a substantial change which would require an advertising of the public hearing, which would get public input all over again.
Right, it is.
They voted that it didn't.
Which is...
No, we did, we did say it re- it needs a public hearing, and that's what, they're on the continued public hearing.
Yeah, I believe that this...
We did agree, it's a, excuse me.
You didn't.
You weren't here.
I'll take it.
Listen, let me, let me, let me clear it, they came here, you weren't here, and we agree it's a major modification. And they did apply, but they, I guess they're not ready for this. They're here to ask for continuance, for the si- that's, forget the drive-through, for the other buildings, they want it larger.
Well, I, I guess that my thinking doesn't change, it needs a separate application, because it would be for a variance, it wasn't applied like a permit. Doesn't include anything in the special permit modification, does it? Because they had withdrawn anything to do with that corner lot in the original...
We're not talking about the corner lot.
No, we're not going there, didn't...
All right, let's set the, let's start again.
Sort of mixing both things together in the discussion, that's what I was trying to get clear.
No, no.
When, when they come in here for the, when they're here for continued public hearing, they're not coming back for the variance. They come, right, you, they're gonna continue, they continue, let me finish. The continued public hearing, which I guess they're not ready today, they're coming back because they wanna increase the size of the buildings, forget the variance, they're not talking about the variance.
Okay.
So, I guess they're not ready, they got asked for continue, we'll talk about it when they come. It is, it is a major modification, we all agreed, and they're coming, and they're prepared for this. The second issue, so the second matter, he's asking, how do we feel about a drive-through? That's a completely different question, what he's here for, so it's gonna be a complete different appli-...
I, I just misunderstood, it sounded to me like you were trying to make a determination on the drive-through.
No, 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 that's a complete different, it's gotta be by itself, totally, completely different application. When, you went here when we told them it's a major modification, I remember, you went here that night. Is that, correct me if I'm wrong. So I'm right, so... And that's, that drive-through, that's the first time we hear about it, it just chit-chatting, I guess. Nothing solid, it just, so, but, going back to the continu- the continuance, when you guys would be ready, you think, November eighth?
So I think what I'd like to do is ask for a continuance to the, the eighth quick, that's, yeah.
Twenty-second Thanksgiving.
Twenty seconds Thanksgiving.
So you're gonna be into December?
December thirteenth.
We'll do the eighth, and we'll write and send a letter if it doesn't work out, I, I can't imagine it's gonna fix. But Jay Donigan just had some surgery done, so he couldn't be here tonight, so I can't ask him what he wants to do, so can we continue to the eighth?
Well, keep it to the eighth, worst come...
Yeah, we'll just ask...
The worst, you just come to the eighth and ask continuance. Okay, so continued to public hearing, the continued public hearing, the thirty-one dash seventeen, he's asking for continuance for the eighth, November eighth?
So moved.
Right, Jim, do I have a second to continue?
Second?
Now, is he?
Yes.
Can I ask a question about this and making it larger? That was, uh, that wa- it was that, um, Autozone? Are you going, no, you didn't come to us to make Autozone larger, you went to the planning board.
No, no.
No, we didn't make Autozone larger.
I watched it, I did.
It was a building.
Yeah, it's, it's the building that's named to it.
Looks like the building is right up against the road, the way it's built right now.
There was no change in that.
No changes. Wilma, they went to Art, to Pub, to the planning board to get an opinion before, nothing changed. They have to come through us to change, nothing changed. It's exactly how we agreed to it. It's getting built, exactly, it's getting built how we agreed to it. So continue, the motion to continue, and second by Carl, you said, or Jen, Carl? Carl, all in favor to continue to November eighth, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain, so we'll see you then.
Thanks so very much for, thank you, I want feedback and for work.
And maybe next time we'll discuss more the other thing. Thank you, have a good one. Petition twenty-nine dash seventeen, Dorothy Schnatter, thirty-one Priscilla, you have?
No, it's a continuance.
Thirty-one Priscilla, did she ask for a continuance?
Yeah, for today, it's her.
Or two today, okay, yeah, it's a continued. So we're just, we've already opened this.
Public hearing is still open, is the owner here?
No, she couldn't make it tonight.
Okay.
Uh... I don't believe this has actually even been opened. The first hearing was continued because of lack of quorum.
Okay.
No.
Lack of, uh, a five-member board.
Isn't the one we asked him to get a...
Didn't we, did we open it and then continue, or did we?
One second.
You can look.
That's why I write notes.
That's why you write notes.
I saw us. I remember very well, is that the guy coming from New York somewhere?
Right back there.
Oh, okay, one second.
Yeah. Throw one in front, yeah.
Carl? Before...
Thank you. One, two.
It was open, it was continued.
I thought so, I have a vague...
We opened it, and then we continued it. It's big red area, it's okay, no, Carl, he's, he's plans to go on with that.
May I have revised site plans?
So these that I'm passing out are no good anymore, or?
No, I change onto them, yes, correct.
Nice, we'll take them back then, right? Thanks.
Brad, do you know the first time was open, was on, uh, October eleventh?
September twenty-seven.
I think it was...
September twenty-second, the first time it opened.
Think it was while you were in Buriedment in Lebanon.
September.
Do you have enough for all those, do you have enough?
No, I wasn't here.
Thank you.
I wasn't here.
Oh, okay.
Now it's a lot.
Priscilla, oh, this is, I gotta go back, this is for you.
It, it was open, then it was continued to ten eleven.
And then the same thing happened again.
On ten eleven, it was continued to...
Tonight.
Oh, it was continued to...
Nine twenty, nine twenty-seven.
Twenty-nine seventeen? Then it was continued to the twenty-fifth.
That's today, is this the one other apartment that...
Today's twenty-fifth.
Oh, okay. Oh, no, okay.
It was, we, we thought it was too close, and we had them withdrawn, you know? Who's Priscilla Ave in the world?
Our one thirty, wait, I'm...
All right.
Kind of his deck is gonna be on the, uh...
I got it, yep, I know where it is.
If I may, I have a couple pictures I can pass around, I'll explain, explain.
You go up, you go up Glen Charlie, instead of turning left onto Plymouth, you go straight, it becomes Barker. Keep going, you hit pin right back onto...
No, take the left on Plymouth.
Yeah.
And, so stay straight, and pretty much the last right, before you get into the town of Plymouth...
Yeah.
Is, I believe, Hardy, and a quick left on Priscilla.
Okay, yeah.
I was lost at front on Plymouth.
Goes down by the boat, boat ramp.
Uh, yes, it will get...
The boat ramp or the canoe base?
Canoe base.
Okay, okay, yep, yep.
All right. Again, I have, I gotta excuse myself, I'm doing some business with...
Is this what he wants to put, they know they want to...
J.C. Engineering, so I wanna turn it over to Jim.
Twenty-seventh it was re...
Okay.
All right.
So this has been read in, so Brad, go ahead, tell us what's new, what's not new, and what's happening.
Let me, let me one more thing. So Jake will be voting for me, I believe, last time, you didn't, did you open that case?
I did not open a case when I was here the last time.
Who opened the case?
I don't believe it was opened.
It wasn't open at all?
I believe it was opened.
It had to be re-adapted.
Oh, okay, so then you gotta read it.
Okay.
So we read it, Jake, I could participate, I can vote on it, Jake will vote in my place, so let's read it to the public.
Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on September twenty-seventh at six thirty PM in room three twenty of the Wareham Mallway Service Center, forty-eight Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. zero two five seven one, for consideration of petition twenty-nine dash seventeen.
Time out, time out, excuse me, there's no way we opened it and continue it, so... Time out, time out, excuse me, there's no way we opened it and continue, it's open. There's no way we continue all this time if it wasn't open.
It was, my point.
It was open.
It was open.
It was, thank you.
It's open to be continued.
Open, it was continued.
For the purpose of continuing it.
Never mind.
Sorry, so go ahead, Brad.
Good evening, Robert Polo of JC Engineering, representing the property owner Dorothy Schnesser. She currently lives in Braintree at the moment, and due to the weather was afraid to drive down. Mrs. Schnesser would like to remodel the dwelling, she came to us to look at the feasibility of putting an addition on this house, or just tearing it down and building new. The structure itself is located, it's a single-family dwelling located on a 6,000-square-foot lot. It is a non-conforming lot, being under the 130,000-foot square-foot requirement. It was a lot that was created prior to zoning, so there were no zoning setback, oh, zoning requirements at the time. The structure itself, according to the assessor's records, was built in 1950, again, prior to zoning. Currently, the house is a single-family, two-bedroom ranch. I have a picture showing the condition or what the current house looks like. As you can see on the site plan, the house is grayed out with a gray hatch that shows the orientation of the house. So, we had looked at the, the structure itself, the foundation, the orientation, how it sits on the lot, and taken into account, considering the current floor plan, we felt it was just more financially feasible to demo the house and build new. Obviously, this house lot is roughly 100 feet deep, so it can't meet any front setback that's required in the zone. It's also only 60 feet wide, which requires 30-foot side setbacks, so there theoretically could not be built on with a simple building permit, would require a permit from this, this board. What we're proposing is a Cape-style house, I have a picture of a similar house that we will, would like to construct, have also included floor plans and architectural plans that shows the look of the house. I figured an actual picture would, you know, be a little easy to understand. The house itself is currently ranch-style, so building a Cape-style house, typically the house, the front door would be on the long side of the house, and to make this more aesthetically pleasing, we felt that turning the house 90 degrees and have the front door face the street would be more beneficial in the neighborhood, or more aesthetically pleasing. In doing so, it does increase the setbacks to the side property line, but holding the setbacks that were in effect prior to the most recent change, again, this lot is 6,000-square-foot lot and can't maintain 100-foot setbacks or 30-foot setback requirements, we felt that 20-foot setback off the front and 10 off the side and rear, which was in existence up until, I believe it was 2004, they made the change to the current setbacks of 130/30. We also took into account that this house is fronting on the pond, and felt that environmentally, if we could pull and provide a greater setback off the pond, which also in turn provides a greater rear setback than currently situated, would be a better situation. This has been in front of the zoning board, I mean, the Conservation Commission, and it's been approved. We're here before you to request a special permit to construct a, a new dwelling, Cape-style home. This is a modest-sized dwelling, it's a two-bedroom house, currently it's still gonna be a two-bedroom house. We felt a colonial-style home would just be too much space for the, for the house, so we, we have a, I believe it's a, they call it a one-and-a-half-story house, or just under two-story house. It's not a full, full two-story, plus the roof. We'll have two dormers in the front, as shown on that picture and the architectural plans, and a dormer off the rear. We are proposing a rear deck as well. This house is obviously in need of repair, and similar with other houses in the neighborhood, it's pretty much a similar footprint, similar size, house, ranches, colonials, Cape-style homes are typical in this area, they're all relatively small lots. A lot of these homes have 6,000 square feet, some at 9,000 square feet, they're all blocks of 3,000-square-foot lots, in this case here, they own two lots. In doing so, we feel that it's not a substantial increase in nonconformity. We are obviously getting closer to the side property lines, we felt that it could be considered a special permit, or should be considered a special permit. We are maintaining the same setback, or similar setback, to the front, so it'll be the same setback off of the front, front of the street. We are maintaining the maximum height, we're not within the, we're not gonna be higher than 35 feet. It is a single-family dwelling, two-bedroom, similar to what's there, so there shouldn't be any increase in traffic in the area. So I don't think it'll be a detriment to this neighborhood to allow this property owner to invest money to reconstruct this house. She has already replaced the septic system a few years back, so that's already been taken care of prior to this work, so... If the board has any questions, I'd like to, I'd like to answer them.
Thank you. As normal, the first thing we'd like to do is ask if there's anybody here in the audience this evening that would like to speak in favor of this application. Hearing none, is there anyone here in the audience that would like to be, speak opposed to this application? Again, hearing none, I turn to the board. We usually start with Wilma, go ahead, Wilma.
Okay, the side setbacks are, and the rear setbacks supposed to be minimum of 30 feet. And if you noticed, adding, building this home, they added to this, to the footrace and made it less conforming to the lot.
That's just a comment that you wanted into the record?
Yep.
Okay.
They're not, it's, should be...
Anything more?
No, it just, they've only got it 11 feet and it should be 30 feet. I mean, it's, you know, I just feel that if they wanna build homes, they could take N. They wanna take the deck and add that way, they could do it and take the sides off the, off...
Okay. Again, I always like to move to the ends and work my way in, Jake?
No questions.
Jan, I'm gonna move to you, but I'm also gonna, while it's your turn, ask your opinion on variance and special permit, because you seem to have a good grasp on this.
Well, I was just trying to pick through exactly what's being shifted around.
Yep.
For, for purposes of making my own determination about whether I think it's a substantial increase in the nonconformity. So, so if you could walk me through that, I, I, unlike most other people on the board, don't have a background in this design and engineering aspect, so bear with me, but it appears to me that you're essentially shifting, just shifting things around, giving a little more space, seven feet from the pond, the waterfront, and then, but taking away a little on...
The sides.
Other sides, right?
Correct, it's basically a, a six-foot expansion width and depth, modest, not huge, but also turned so that we could pull away from the, the wetlands. There's obviously existing footprint, that's a deck, that although maybe something that we could try to present to this board to build on from deck to finished room, it's something that Conservation Commission would not approve, due to the zoning sep, setback to the resource areas being within 30 feet of their bylaw. So we felt that if we could pull all habitable space outside of that 30 feet, in this case here, turn it, it would be more aesthetically pleasing because of a Cape-style home, you know, a front of the house, friends on the street, as opposed to the neighbor, I just felt that that would be more beneficial to this neighborhood.
So you're obviously never, ever, ever, ever gonna have the appropriate side setback. So what did you, what did you have before and what will you have now?
Currently, it's 18 feet on the southern boundary, it's the nearest point, it's actually, the deck itself is 17 feet, 17.3, and we're proposing the structure to be set at 11 feet. On the northern property line, it's pretty much the same, same difference, it's about a six or seven-foot increase, but again, holding the setbacks that were in existence prior to the current, current change in 2004, something that 20-foot front, 10 side and rear was, the zoning setbacks were all residential, and then in 2004, they decided to change our 16, our 130, not taking into account that a lot of these lots can't even be built on with that. It makes, makes sense for three-acre zoning, I understand that, but for these lots, small, small, small lots, it just doesn't make sense. Unfortunately, the bylaw doesn't protect the small lots from that, so that's why we're in front of you.
During this discussion, if I could interrupt you both for a second, on the southern border, it appears that there's a 10-foot passage, is that a community passage to the water?
Correct, there, what's fronting on the pond side of this lot, there's a, it's called a beach, beach area on the old subdivision plans, the access to that is from that 10-foot passage, it's currently not built in, I don't...
So there's another, there's another 10 feet between this lot line and the lot line of Lot 80, if you will, on map 124.
Correct, so that has at least a 21-foot setback from that, that property line. Again, the passage would never be built upon, I mean, there could be a, a path constructed, but structural-wise, there would never be a, a structure on that lot.
Sorry, I just didn't, I just wanted, it's, Jan still has the floor, I just was...
No, I'm done.
You're done with your questions? Before we move to Carl, I'd still curious as to your opinion on variance, are you wanting more, some more time to mouth?
We're talking, six, six, seven-foot...
Each side.
Decrease on, on, on one side, and at the same time, you're giving more...
There's no decrease on either side, north or south, it's an increase.
Well, there's a decrease, there's a decrease in the back.
Okay, okay, I'm with you.
What I'm getting at.
Yeah, okay.
You know, is that a substantial increase in the noncon, I think that's, that's a little more up for interpretation than, for example, the Dormer case, I, I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not entirely sure.
Okay, okay.
I'd be interested to hear what other people thought.
Carl, what do you have for questions, any?
I have none.
None?
I think it's...
You think, go ahead.
I'm in favor of it.
You're in favor, okay. Nazzy, you have any questions?
Yeah, I, I always think, whenever they created that bylaw, it's horrible for the existing houses, I mean, we, we go through this all the time, this bylaw gotta change somehow, we tried to change it last time, I guess it didn't get presented.
So...
It's, it's horrible, everyone that wanna, I mean, based on the old bylaw prior to 2008, they wouldn't need to come here.
Yep.
They have the 10 for everything.
I got it.
It's, but unfortunately...
I think it was an overs, I mean, you know, hey, you can't, nobody writes bylaws perfectly. If they did, they wouldn't keep getting amended.
It's good for three acres, yeah, but not for...
And, and I...
5,000-square-feet lots, which the whole area is.
How about our town engineer, do you have any commentary or anything to add, or?
Just a couple things, just for your own information. There's an increase in the square meters of the building of approximately 50%. However, it's probably a good example of that portion of the requirement for seeking a variance, that due to the topography, size of lot and so forth, it is kind of a unique situation when you consider it with respect to the zoning district as a whole.
Okay.
So I simply say that for informational purposes, the only other question I had dealt with the septic system, and I realize that it's a building that's under the purview of the Board of Health, but the question to the applicant's engineer was whether or not there is a deed restriction on the lot already because of the two-bedroom septic system. I believe there should be under Title V requirements.
And that would, again, that would be the Board of Health that would impose that, not us, you just bring it to...
That's correct, and I was just asking that for the purpose of that, because that means that under that situation, they cannot expand this beyond the two bedrooms.
You said that's all it was, it's two, right?
It is two, I'd have to go back, we did that septic upgrade a, a number of years ago, I don't recall if the one was filed or not, it could have been, again, it'd be under the purview of the Board of Health.
It should be there as a deed restriction.
Yeah, I, I got you, I'm with, I, I agree, but again, it's not up to us, but it's great to bring it into public conversation so that maybe it can get kicked on down the line. Dave, do you have any questions or comments for us?
I'm not gonna give an opinion on this either way, but I will add that there is existing and, it was actually passed, a new case law that says that you cannot require a variance for a structure that's already nonconforming. You can only require a variance for a new nonconformity, and it's actually a brand-new case, it just came out last week. So in this case, if it's nonconforming on all sides, under case law, it, it, it would be eligible for a special permit.
Okay.
That's all I'll add.
Okay, that's good information.
So non, existing nonconforming, it can be a variance?
It cannot be a variance if it's already nonconforming on that side. If it's a new nonconformity, you can require a variance. But a structure that's already nonconforming cannot require a variance.
That's not, that's good to know.
That's, that's good information. The only person in the room that we haven't asked for any noise out of has been very quiet. Do you have, again, do you have anything to add or subtract or?
No, I think you've gone over the point.
I think we, we, you think we've chewed it well enough? Okay. Then, all that said, would anybody like to make a motion to close the public hearing and then we can move on to a vote?
Make a motion to close, close the public hearing.
Can I have a second for that, please?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye. Aye. And opposed? It carries with closed. Okay, now we're looking for a motion to either grant or deny this application.
I make a motion, we grant it as presented.
Thank you, Carl, any, do I have a second?
Decide first if it's a special permit.
I think we're, I think we're going for a special permit, I think we...
Okay.
Do you wanna take a vote on that, or?
I think based on what Dave said, right, we couldn't require, we wouldn't be able to require a variance.
But that's, that's on the case law, well, let's act on our bylaw.
Okay, let's step back a little bit, Carl, do you mind if we...
I make a motion, we grant as a special permit.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Jake, all in favor of granting as a special permit, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
It passes by a majority with one dissenting vote. Now we'll move on to the application itself, do I, Carl, would you like to represent your...
I make a motion that we present, that we accept as presented.
Thank you, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second from Jake, thank you, Jake. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
One opposing vote, it, again, it passes on a simple majority. Thank you for coming in.
Brad, you, you revised this September 27, right?
Correct.
Let me have the architectural plan.
You want this? Then you want this. Is this what you're looking for?
Thank you very much, Carl.
The date is the same, Dave.
The date is the same. The revision is the same as the original.
September 27.
So you get to use either one?
You need both.
Thank you, thank you. You need both. So let's start, do it per plan. Let's do it per Plan S plans. Thank you, you did that.
I did find these, so...
We're good. So all we have to do is start signing. Yeah, go ahead.
All of you.
I have the longest name, so it takes me the longest to sign.
Probably just forget how to spell it from time to time.
That's what I do, I have to look at it.
Right.
Yeah. Did you see me pulling my, and the cheat, looking at my name tag?
Yeah, I saw that. Oh, my bad.
That's granted, right?
It only took kindergarten for me to know that when the teacher paused during roll call, it was my turn to say aye.
Wilma said no.
Wilma said nay. Do we have that on here? Five, one, zero. Special permit, grant. Four, zero, no, four, one, zero. And... And so we have Wilma's consenting vote? Or is that dissenting?
Dissenting.
Oh, dissenting.
Just one.
That's it. Thank you.
Do you want to read what I wrote for the record, or you don't care?
No. Let them type it all out. If anybody wants to, they can come in and read the record.
Okay.
Get it read.
Yes.
Another one, 32, that's 17, Dean Gilholy, 18, Pine Lake Drive.
This is continued? We don't need to read this one either, do we? And you're back on chair, I believe.
So that case has been opened, and I believe last time we asked you for...
Yes, I'm Dean Gilholy. We own 18 Pine Lake Drive, I live in 23 Clinton Drive in Washingtonville, New York. You asked me to come back with a new site plan.
Correct.
Which I have. I'll bring it to you. Where am I? Oops, sorry. Just want to remind you guys, my family have owned this property since 1951. It was built in '46 before the present zone was. You see the heat on the west side of the property, it's only 4, 3 and 1/2 feet setback. What I'm just trying to do is put a porch, add a simple skid-in porch, which that would bring it, because the pine-shaped lot, that would bring it to 10 and 1/2 feet from the western side.
Okay, very good. I guess there's no one in the audience against or for. I've moved to the board. Wilma, what do you have for questions?
18 Pine Lake Drive. Up Quinelli Road, take a right, Pine Lake Drive.
Spectacled pond.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay. Yep, yep.
Just want to add, my father-in-law and grandfather took meticulous care of the properties for the last 60 years, and we haven't added anything to it. Some of the other houses in the neighborhood are not up to par, you know, as far as that, as far as maintenance, and I think this would improve the neighborhood and property values.
It's unfortunate, I don't think we have a photograph of the house in here.
You could have one.
There is one, there is one in the file.
Okay, okay, I'm finding it. I remember now. And we had a discussion on, I'm sorry, Nazir, good writing I'm talking. We had discussion on this, and the big concern was the relationship of the proposed porch to the existing septic system. Is that my memory correct?
We didn't get far on, somebody brought it up, but we didn't get far on it. I have been in touch with the Board of Health numerous times on it.
Yep.
He was giving me a note saying that he has absolutely no problem with it. It has, I'll...
I only have one copy, though.
You have one? It's your only copy?
I have another copy for myself.
Okay, then we can... I'm gonna read this in the record. "I have reviewed the location of the subsurface disposal system on Lot 56, 18 Pine Lake Driveway Ham. It is my opinion that the placement of the sonar tubes will not interfere with the septic system itself. Very truly yours, Robert M. Ethier, Director, Wayham Board of Health." It's now gonna be part of this file.
Thank you.
Jake, you have a question?
No questions.
Jan?
No.
Carl?
No.
Jim?
None.
Charlie wants to... David? I, like I said, I believe based on applicant's plan and testimony that a special permit is adequate, because I don't think the proposed project is detrimental to the neighborhood. Therefore, a relief from Article 6, Table 621, and Article 13, Section 13, 35 is adequate for this project. And then we go for a special permit. That's my opinion.
I make a motion that we consider it a special permit?
Right, well, let's, and if there's no more discussion, we'd less close the public hearing, then we go for that, but...
So moved.
I have a second to close it?
Second.
Second, all in favor to close public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, it's closed. So based on the...
So based on your earlier testimony and my own opinion, I don't believe, I believe this is a special permit. And so I make a motion to grant as a special permit.
I have a second for that.
Second.
All in favor, treat it as special permit, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, so it's special permit.
So now that we've agreed it's a special permit, I continue to move that we grant as presented.
Any, I have a second for that?
Second.
You can, you can second. Any wants?
Second, third, fourth, and fifth.
Somebody want a second, Jim?
I second it.
Okay, any discussion? Jan? No discussions?
She's staring at it, we're giving her...
Oh, no, sorry.
Okay. Advil helps.
Carl, any discussion on that?
No, I'm in favor of it.
Wilma?
A discussion on the motion.
The only condition that I see is that it's, make sure that it's built to plan.
Okay. And that is...
As per plan. Dated by J.C. Engineering and dated, and I will find the date, October 20, 2017.
Any other conditions? I guess...
We got a motion, we need to vote on it.
Right. Okay, and I would say you have to, it does not relieve you from any other boards. If the Board of Health want to put conditions, that's their problem, but I guess you don't have a problem with that, so. All right. Do I have a second on Jim's motion?
I second it.
Right, and, sorry, he did make a motion. The conditions, anyone else want to add a motion? Any conditions? Okay, do I have a second? Second by Carl, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain. Carrie's, thank you, good.
Thank you for coming back with that drawing.
No problem, Dave.
Have a good one. And let's sign this.
Nice.
You have had longer than...
Been on the bright side.
Too bad that the guy had to come here and get a okey-dokey to build a little deck like that, but he did, and he did, and he did, but we asked him.
Let's start signing.
In your hand.
Let me finish writing.
Under your pen.
I should be the clerk.
You should be. I think you're doing a great job. Thank you.
Anyone else want to talk about anything else tonight?
Yeah, close the meeting.
Yeah, do you want to close that?
Have Nazir sign it as well.
While you're in the signing mode, sign that. Don't ask what it is, just sign it.
That's the open space.
Ray, I brought it in.
Takes a lot out of me.
Yeah, O'Reilly brought it in, and he wants you to sign it.
Read this quick.
Read this into the record? This is a different matter?
Yeah, you guys want to listen to this quick, just for the...
For the record, October 17, 2017, "I am writing to question whether the Morgan's Mobile Home Park on Cranberry Highway is acting in a manner that is good for the tenants. We all signed an agreement when we moved, rented, or bought these mobile homes. We seem to have no protection as elderly, there are questions. Why are so many under 55-year-olds living in the park? Why are so many children living in the park? We all had to present IDs showing our age to get into the park, yet you have people well under 55 living there. You have a group on the second street in the middle, in the mother dies, the son moved in and brought in his son and significant other and their two children in a single wide home. There are children all over this park. There are young families all over this park. We bought or rented with the idea we could live a safe, quiet existence, and that is not happening. Our agreement states no one can move in for any length of time, no more than six or eight weeks, and that is with the manager's permission. What about us? There are alcoholics, drug addicts, et cetera, roaming the park at night. Would you feel safe? There are school buses taking children to school. Look at the sign out front, "Over 55 Community." Our monthly fee depends on the park's expenses. These young families are using more of everything, water, et cetera. So due to that, and some grandparents taking in laundry, more water usage, our monthly fee will go up. We seem to have no protection. We can't go to the park owners because we do not have any voting powers. Do they get a tax break because of services to elderly? We need this park cleaned out. We understand some of the under 55 may be disabled. That is special circumstances, but what about the rest? Do we need to go to the State House? Do we need to get elder abuse involved? We are mostly all on fixed incomes, and this is going to be a financial impact for us, for a lot of us. Can you help? Unsigned."
Well, this letter wasn't our package.
It came into the planning office.
Okay, well, it is a very legit letter. I think it's very important that we follow up with this. Whoever applied for it, if they come back, they should contact elderly abuse if there's an office for it. I don't know when the park was created, if there's actually rules for 55 and older, but I think the town, whoever is in charge, whoever, judges should follow up for it, because these people, like they said, they're on fixed income, and they get disturbed, and it's costing them more money, so I think, David, if you could check on it, or Ken...
What place, what park was that?
Morgan.
Morgan, right next to Home Depot, behind Subway.
Oh, yeah. There's, all the parks are like that now. It's getting bad from what I've seen in town, all the 55-plus they have.
We should check on it, you know, I think it's only fair for these...
Who enforces that?
I don't know.
The 55? Is it the park? Is their own park?
Well, we're gonna check, no.
There is a...
There's a law...
There is a state body that regulates mobile home parks, and there is law on this. And in order for a park to qualify as a 55 or older park, they must maintain a minimum of 80% of their occupancy, age 55 and older. The 20% remaining can in fact be below the age of 55.
There's teeth there. They must get tax credits or something, then.
There is, there's, no.
Otherwise, who cares?
That's, well...
You know, who cares? There's, they have to, there must be some teeth there.
Again, I'm not well familiar with it. I can tell you that there is, one of the owners of a park in this town happens to be very involved in the organization and in structuring the laws, and not this park, and maybe that would be the person that I'd refer this letter writer to. I don't know who the letter writer is, but we could not officially state that person or refer him. I wouldn't do it publicly, that's for sure. I mean, I can't refer...
Right.
The resident of one park to go talk to the owner of another park.
Well, bottom line, it'd be nice if we could check on it and help them out, if somebody can. I don't know who can or can't.
We'll look into it.
Just look into it, because exactly what they said, it's only fair...
It's a mess over there. They had a big fire, a terrible fire last week, two weeks ago.
And if it says 55 and older, it should be 55 and older, and like they said, the fee's gonna get more for these people, and they're on fixed income, so if we could help them out, if, we can't, but if you guys could help them, it would be great. I'm sure they appreciate it.
Let's see what we can do.
Okay. We'll test the law. Okay, anything else? If none, let's make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Have a second?
Okay.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, oppose, abstain. Thanks, Bob.